Now 9:30 on October 18th, 2018, we will open this meeting of the Yamhill County Transit Area Board of Directors. I would like, at this point in time, to consider the approval of the minutes from the August 30th, 2018 board meeting. Do I have a motion?
Also.
It's been moved that we approved the minutes from the August 30th meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approved. At this point in time, I would like to open the floor to public comment. Do I have any? I don't have any requests to make public comment. So, seeing none, we will move to item number three on our agenda, which is the Transit Development Plan Final Draft Discussion and Adoption. And for this portion of the meeting, I would like to ask our Transit Director Cynthia to take it over.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First thing I wanted to say was thank you to both Stan and Rick, and you guys have been very involved from the very beginning as liaison to transit, and I appreciate that. That doesn't always happen. It's been a long process, like 21 months of planning and reaching out to a broad segment of the community in Yamhill County. I think our original stakeover list was 300 people or organizations. We did try pretty hard to get education and business, but we weren't able to get them to be involved as much as we would have liked, but we did get quite a bit done. And just for the record, I thought I'd just go through sort of a very brief summary of kind of what the process was and what we came up with. So, you know, obviously now we hired Nelson Nygaard. They did a really fabulous job. I've been very pleased with them. Back in, I think we kicked the project off in February of 2017. We actually applied for the grant almost a year before that, but by the time we got the scope of work and everything, it took about a year, and we kicked it off February of 2017. And their first task was they looked at our existing system, looked at the existing conditions, and summarized that in reports all along the way. They did tech memos, which there were five of them until you ended up with the final document. And they updated you as a board and as the commissioners throughout the process. So, they looked at existing conditions, and then they created sort of a planning framework of how we would go forward. And then we obviously had quite a bit of public input and looked at all the different areas and what the strategy should be for service going forward, and they came up with those, and then that was vetted by the Yamhill County Transit Advisory Committee, along with additional members, which we called the PAC, Project Advisory Committee. We also had a project website throughout the process so that the public could be informed. And we attempted to put all the documents that happened along the way so people could go to that site and get information. And so, in the end, they came up with the final plan, and I think it's a really good plan. It has a lot of things that I actually didn't think we would be able to get included, just because the scope, you know, was, we didn't have, we had to kind of pare it back in the beginning, just to keep within the grant amount. But things that I think are notable for you to remember as you go forward is, there's a whole section on land use and guidance for code for cities and things like that. It isn't super detailed, but it's enough detail that I think it gives guidance to other communities when they're doing new development, how to think about transit and what that means. There's also a performance monitoring program in the plan, so we can look at routes as we do these new improvements, because we have this new funding. We can say, okay, let's say we started a new route here, and we can look at ridership and our, a whole variety of measurements and see how we think that that service is doing, and then assess that, and then if the board decides, you know, it really isn't performing the way we want, then we have some guidance to how to deal with that. What else did I want to say about it? I guess the main thing is, you know, not, I think the timing has been really, really good, because you've had a system in place for a long time, actually, if you count the time that you had all the non-profit providing service. But since the county's been responsible and contracting with the service provider, I think it's the perfect time to have a plan done, because you really have now a foundation. And no matter who sits in this seat, or I currently sit, if you remember, this is here, you can go back to it, and it's a very good foundation and a starting point. Sure, things are going to change, but the county's not going to change significantly, and you always have a place to go back. If you just remember and keep it as a living document, and I think that's really got to be your jobs as the board of directors for the district. And also, there's a recommendation here that all the cities within Yamhill County adopt this document as their guiding, guidance for transit in their community. I mean, essentially, you as the board of directors are adopting it for the district, which includes all 10 cities, but it would probably be nice to have them formally actually adopt it. Some cities have more requirement and more guidance and goals and policies regarding transit than others. Obviously, Newburgh and McMinnville are bigger cities, so they have more. But I think it's a really, really good starting place, and I'm proud of everybody who worked on it, and it took a lot of people and a lot of time and energy by community members. I mean, we went to numerous events, and friends of the bus were involved, and lots of citizens, and they rallied people, and, you know, it was quite a process, probably the best one I think I've ever been involved in, and I've been involved in quite a few over the years. So, I'm pleased, and I'm pleased that it's finished, and I can focus on actually implementing something, which I know would make some of our riders very happy. So, I think that covers what I wanted to say, but be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you for your...
Just a comment that you indicated that that document is there, and you hope we refer back to it at some time. I'm hoping it's a working document and not a shelf document. A lot of work did go into it, a lot of input, a lot of hours, and it can move us forward, and it does give us the flexibility to look at. Obviously, anytime you create a plan like that, it has shortcomings, weaknesses, things that will need to be addressed, and the plan is flexible enough to allow us to do that. It gives the board the ability to go in and say, gee, we need to take a look at this route. We need to take a look at how we're providing services to this community. It does allow that, so I'm very pleased with the outcome, and I do know the significant amount of public input to it. But I just wanted to thank you, Cynthia, for the amount of time, energy, effort, and just blood, sweat, and tears that you put into it. Thank you very much.
I just want to echo that, Commissioner, just the commitment and the dedication that you exhibited putting this together. It wasn't easy, but, so thank you. I think it's, you've been a real asset to this effort.
I'd just like to add a couple of comments. Again, I'd like to thank Cynthia and Nelson Nygaard, novel consultants for the work they did on this. Even though I feel that there's some areas that the outreach could have been better, more people been involved. I talked a little bit about Tuesday, and I talked to legal counsel, because my, it was a little confusing to me, is being the commissioners acting as the board of directors of the transit area, but yet as the entity, the authorized entity, where the roles cross, who does the financial, who does the policy, who does everything, which I still think we need to maybe in the next year or so revisit, because it's still really kind of, there's areas that are really kind of murky, and who really is responsible for that. But to say that, I think the plan, for the most part, is really good. I think a lot of work in, when I think there's some things in the plan that weren't probably addressed like they could have been, but for this discussion of the board of directors, us as the board of directors, I would be for moving this forward to the board of commissioners. I can tell you after talking to people yesterday that there will be people there to provide testimony, and so I will be asking when we get into the board of commissioners meeting that we remove it off the consent agenda for discussion, but for the purpose of the YCTA board, I think we can move it forward, approve it, and move it forward.
Also, I see three members of Friends of the Bus back there, and they've been very active, very involved in this process, and I do want to say thank you on behalf of Yamhill County. I know that not everything that you've been hammering on and wanting is in this plan as it currently exists, but it doesn't mean that as we move forward and implement the plan, that these will not be addressed. We can find out how much the plan moved your desires forward and where the shortcomings are, and we can start working on fixes. But it's been a long process, and your input and your actions, your presence in the meetings has been appreciated, so thank you very much. I didn't want that to go unsaid. So, moving forward with that, then, I am, I would take your statement as a motion, Commissioner Olson.
Right, and I will, as I say, I'll make a motion during the regular formal to take it off the consent for discussion, but for the purpose of the YCTA board, I will make the motion that we approve the final draft of the transit development plan.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to accept this final draft to move forward to the board of commissioners. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I would ask for a vote of the board on that motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. So, thank you very much. We will move this forward, then, for discussion at the board of director, the county commissioners meeting.
I think it's important, Mr. Chair, that the audience, since they parlayed that they are aware that they will have another chance at the formal meeting, if they did want to provide any comments, that they could provide comments at the formal meeting also following this meeting.
Would that be something that we could do at this point? Maybe have comment during this meeting instead of during formal?
Yes.
That still get us to where we need to be?
Formal could get a little shortened by our earthquake drill.
Yeah.
You could add another comment period to this meeting.
Yeah.
I'd recommend we do that, then.
Okay, yes, I did, at the point of public comment on our agenda, I had no request for public comment, so consequently, we moved to the next agenda. If there is anybody who would like to make public comment at this time, we will take the time for that.
Excuse me, Commissioner, can I just suggest that we deal with item four before we get into public comment, so we at least don't have pretty much cleaned up the whole agenda? Is that okay?
I have a request that we move item four on the agenda forward prior to reinstating public comment time, so at this point in time, I would like to talk about the declaring two buses surplus, Unit 304 and 400, a 2002 El Dorado Escort and 2004 El Dorado. And these two pieces are being listed as surplus, so they can be sold. If there is any further discussion? Hearing none, I would like to ask for a vote of the board. All in favor of declaring these surplus signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. With that, then, we will move those two to surplus, so they can be disposed of. And with that, I did see somebody jump up and fill out an intent to speak card, so if you would make sure that Carolina gets those requests, but in the sake of...
Mine's for the next meeting, so I guess there's a different...
No.
No, you can hardly, if you fill that out, you can...
This is strictly in relationship to the bus.
Just the bus, just transit.
I'll wait till...
You gotta wait till the 10 o'clock meeting.
I don't know. I suppose you give these to her.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. You want, okay. You can all do it.
Nice try.
You would please state your, yeah, give those to Carolina. And state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Martha O'Donnell, Friends of the Bus. Thank you for your comment. Yes, Cynthia did work hard at the end here, and that's great, and we still have some holes that need to be taken care of since the accident two days ago on 99 behind 599. I think it's important for you to know, two years ago, I pointed out that that was an unsafe spot for the bus, and had a solution, and yes, they made the solution, but they don't, rather than what we wanted was to go by Winco at the door, then drive over to Walmart at the door, and then go out at the light, rather than be on 99, because one of our members in the group, who isn't here today because I forgot to call, Jean in the wheelchair, two years ago at that particular stop, it wasn't a car accident, but it was because the roadway was, the walkway was icy. When he got off the bus, he rolled down the embankment, down into the parking lot behind, and it took five people off the bus to help him get back up. This is just two incidences, but it's not a safe area, and like this area where he slid down, the other area that's not safe that everyone's ignoring is at Walmart, and there is a big culvert there, and that's where the bus stops. And the city needs to put more fencing in to protect the people, and it isn't just people in wheelchairs, it's people like me.
Martha, for one correction, I believe you mean Walgreens and not Walmart.
Walgreens, what did I say?
Walmart.
Oh, well, I'm sorry.
That's right, I just wanted to clarify.
Oh, you're right. Okay, so I just am concerned, it, there was six years ago, or five years ago, Florence is the expert on that, since I've only been doing this for three years. But it really, it's dangerous and, but years ago, the bus transit used to go, turn off of Fellows, turn left, not go through Linfield, and turn left, and they had to walk across, and they took it all out and switched it to the other side, which is dangerous. And why you wanted it to switch back to Baker instead of Adams, so that's just my comment for today.
Or Baker Street, when you talk about Baker Street, that's in front of the old school where the pullout actually is for buses. There used to be a school right there on the Baker, going north on Baker and across from Walgreens.
The hospital was there.
The earthquake of...
I think that's Old Columbus. Yeah, the Columbus School was there.
But that's where the turnout for the bus was on that side.
Yeah, yeah.
I went that route this morning, at 7:30, and they don't pick anybody up.
You mean through Linfield? Through Linfield. Yeah, I know. That's another thing, I wasn't going to talk about that, but, because I'm on to safety now at the moment. I could let Martha talk about that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Martha, and again, thank you for all your time and energy that you put into this.
Thanks.
If you'd just state your name and address for the record, please, Florence.
Florence Hoffman, 1025 Tolliver Drive, in Baker. I went to the meeting yesterday, and I hoped I'd hear something about the things that were carried over and caused this transportation to exist 27 years ago. They were dependent on helping the elderly be independent and emotionally sound by getting out and getting around and socializing, and I didn't hear anything to that effect, and I was very sad, and I think you ought to reconsider the importance of the elderly in this community. Now, do you want to talk about the Walgreens stop? Because right now, it's a miracle nobody's gone off into Cozine. It's serious.
So, are you making a note of that, Cynthia? Yeah, okay, thank you.
So, were those concerns brought up during this process? They were, and they were...
They're being, they're addressed in the plan, the Big Five stop, we are going to talk to Linfield about going in front of their store. We originally talked about going behind their store, they have to leave during the day, so there's a discussion about whether we have a special place in the parking lot or what, so we have to finish that discussion before we get implemented. The plan is to go through Winco. The Walgreens, if I remember correctly, I may not have this right, but I believe when we're looking at all the new routes, we're adding buses in McMinnville in that near-term phase, we're altering that route so you won't have a stop at that location. It's pretty expensive to fix that stop. You'd have to, you know, if there isn't, she's correct, there isn't a lot of room, and to actually make it so that it's the way you want it to be would cost more than it's probably worth. It's better to change the route and not get stopped there, and just fix the stop.
Yeah, I think that what Cynthia is saying is, since that is on the state highway, there's the permitting process from ODOT to get that to anything.
There's also not a lot of...
We do along that. I know last year, when I was transit liaison before Commissioner Primusich took over, I brought, there were three places I think in McMinnville that really created safety concern. That summer, it was just going to be a matter of time before somebody gets hurt, was Big Five, was the Walgreen situation, and in front of Bymark. And I think there's plans to do something about those three, isn't there, Cynthia, in the current plan?
In the plan, yeah.
So, to your points, yes, there, it's frustrating to have to wait, but I think we've all come to find that whenever you have a number of different government entities involved in trying to fix a problem, it can take longer than what we would hope, so just know that it is being addressed.
As it stands, you can move the bus stop down to the fence. That's safer than going off the cliff into the Cozine. If you're in a wheelchair, or if your blood pressure is an acting up, is acting up.
I think with that, the thing that would concern me is knowing ODOT, and I think Commissioner Primusich and I and Commissioner Terrell, I know how ODOT operates. I'm surprised ODOT lets us have one there at all, because there's no designated crosswalk, there's nothing there at all. So, in addition, what Florence says about moving it farther back up, then you have the rise coming over right there, and I'm not so sure that would actually alleviate any of the problem.
Be any safer, yeah.
No, to go back to the fence, you can see the traffic coming back.
But can the traffic see you, the buses pulled over?
They can't see you where it is now.
Well, I know, that's, but I'm just, but when you deal with ODOT and stuff, it is pretty difficult. But I agree with you that that is a very dangerous, very dangerous stop, Florence.
The easiest way to correct it is to have the bus turn left on Fellows after it leaves Fellows, as it did six years ago.
Well, it is an issue that we are aware of, it's quite obvious, and we will be looking at what are the solutions and how can we implement them in the near term.
We have been bringing this up for six years.
Oh, I understand that, Florence, and this proves, this plan has been being hashed out for two years, but we are getting to the point now where the plan is going to be implemented, and we can start addressing some of these concerns. Now, obviously, we will not be addressing every concern that every bus rider has, but we're going to certainly attempt to make this the most efficient and effective transit system that we can. And hearing your concerns is part of that process, so we are not ignoring the issue. As Commissioner Olson pointed out, he looked at it significantly when he was the liaison, and it is on our list of corrective measures, but again, movement in government does take a lot more time than most of us would like to see.
That was a very well-used stop. In fact, it probably has a lot to do with how much, how less the people are using Route Three. It was a very, very, and then the stop in front of the waterfall, that's what brought people on that route, and when they couldn't get there, they found another way.
I think if I can address one thing Florence said, Mr. Chair, is that I do believe all of us as commissioners, and as the board of YCTA, take safety as our number one concern with the plan, and so anything we do, I think we'll have to address that safety issue as our number one priority.
For the sake of time, I do have another intent to speak card, so Jody, if you wanted to...
Jody was up for the formal, though you were going to speak during the formal. This is the YCA issue.
I did not hold a microphone call. I would like to...
Well, it just said it was to YCTA, and so we had reopened the public comment portion of this meeting.
So, I'm sorry, I should not have...
Yeah, if we could hold that till the formal meeting, I think, what she's requesting.
Yeah, well, it has to do with the YCTA issue. We can take it now, that's why we changed the...
Do you have anybody else coming, Jody?
No, I have statements to repeat.
Okay, you can do it.
If you would, we're going to have a, we could possibly have a shortened formal because of the earthquake drill, so...
Can you hear me?
If you'd state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Jody Christensen, Executive Director of the McMinnville Economic Development Partnership. The address is 231 Northeast 5th Street, McMinnville, 97128. I'm here today primarily to speak to you about the importance of an effective and efficient transportation system, transit system, for the community, and I just wanted to share some items of note as you move forward in the planning for the future of Yamhill County's transit system. There are three key, there are several key factors that I would hope that you would consider as you're building this system out. Number one, Yamhill County has three opportunity zones. These zones are going to attract a significant amount of private investment and likely will create new employment centers, which will require an efficient and effective transit system to move people around the county. In McMinnville's opportunity zone, it includes 90 acres on Highway 18 that is currently a vacant site. We have several people looking at that now. Our opportunity zone goes all the way from the airport, includes the 90 acres, all the way up Highway Lafayette Avenue and the industrial park. Our industrial park is a large employment area for McMinnville. Our airport is the third busiest regional airport in the state. There's significant activity out there. These opportunity zones are going to accelerate the investment in those areas, and I believe it will have a significant impact on the way that people move around our county. There are two announcements that just came out about developments in our industrial park, both 26 acres and 28 acres. Both the owners of those properties have indicated they will be developing those, and they have companies that are lined up to be tenants in those facilities, again, increasing the employment in our industrial area. There's a significant challenge in our community around housing, but also the interconnectivity between transportation and housing areas. As you may know, there's a lot of what is called smart growth planning in our communities now, and really trying to create less traffic and more systems, using systems like biking and bus systems to move people around. Workforce housing programs often require a bus service component to it, so they're multimodal. So, your plan will have a significant impact on communities' abilities to be able to access some of these programs. If they do not have an effective transportation system to these new housing developments, that will put them at a disadvantage for accessing these funds. Also, it's important to remember that in Yamhill County, there's a significant amount of commuting going around. The largest commuting population into McMinnville is from Yamhill County, so people are not coming from other counties, they're moving from within this county to find work and to be working. So, to have an effective system, we need to be very forward-thinking in innovation around, should we be looking at park and ride? Should we be looking at the way we schedule transportation so that we're fitting more in line with work schedules, so that the bus system can become a fully realized infrastructure in this county to be able to help move people around to and from work? I reached out to two organizations that I work with on a regular basis. The first organization is Chomekata Community College. I asked them, what are their challenges around transportation? Paul Davis responded, one challenge we are having is the bus stops running when we still have classes going on in the evening. Students must leave class early, which is not an optimum learning strategy, to catch the last bus. the last bus or not take evening classes at all. So, it's having an impact on their ability to further their education. He also stated, West Valley students and tribal members have said that they've had to get up extremely early to catch several different buses to make it to campus for an 8:30 morning class. So, West Valley has some challenges in being connected to the resources in our county, and it's important to understand that's having an impact on Chameca de's student population. I asked Megat Polymers and Composites to provide a statement, and at this time, I'd like to read a statement, I also have a copy.
Yeah, if you would. I, Madam Chair, I am eating into your board time, which is a...
Okay, I can, I can give you a copy. This is stating that they have had significant issues in parking. They are willing to partner with the county in a variety of solutions to effectively increase their ability to have a transit system stop in their, by their location. They're willing to fund passes for their employees. They are not hiring because they've run out of parking. That's a significant issue. I wanted you to consider that as you build out your transit area committee, and that you have their voices, those voices of education and industry heard during those important meetings that are taking place. They're going to be informing you what's needed in the future, and you want to make sure that they're represented, that you have business, workforce, and education represented on that committee. That's what I ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody.
Thanks, Jody.
With that, I am going to, if you'd give those to Carolina. Thank you, Jody. I'm going to close this meeting, the YCTA board, and...